Would you call the roll please?
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Cavanagh.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark M.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to take personal privilege and turn the meeting over to Steve right now.
Mayor, thank you. I just, I asked some of our firefighters to be here tonight. I'm gonna call their names out and guys will come up here and stand up here. And when I call your name, these were some of the guys that were on the first on the scene at Plaza Towers Elementary School as well as the heart doctor, the clinic over across from the hospital. There's many others that need to be congratulated and recognized and we will, but this is kind of our first round at that. And these guys again were, were some of the first ones on the scene at Plaza and the heart clinic over there. And so I'm gonna call, I don't think, I've seen Briggs not here. Chad Cannon, I'm just gonna go ahead, Sean Coffey, Terrence Morrison, Andrew Burham, Chris Compton. And I understand firefighter, Corporal Compton unfortunately lost his home in the storm, so the gentleman right here, so our condolences for you on that. Eric Day, Corley Moore, Blake Munsey, Sean Nidel, Kyle Olson, Josh Trent, Thomas Hayes, Mark Murdock. I'd just like to say thank you guys. We have an outstanding, outstanding fire department and a group of, maybe some of them that are just on duty that are with them. You guys can stand up too, but we appreciate you guys very much as first responders and going in there and helping out, pull people out. I don't know exactly how many people these guys helped pull out, but I know it was, but it was quite a few out there and saved quite a few lives, I'm convinced, out there. So, thank you guys very much. Do you want to say anything? No?
I'm very proud of it.
Thank you guys. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I have one other that I would like to make. And I know there was tons and tons of these pictures out here and people keep giving me boxes and stacks of them. And the National Disaster Photo Rescue has been really good about taking these and restoring them and posting them online. And tonight, we have Angela here from the National Disaster Photo Rescue. And I would like for her to come forward to get these. And if you guys have pictures out there, these are the people you need to turn them over to because they're doing excellent job. There's no charge and they're just getting them back to people.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Want to say a few words? Go to the microphone right there if you would.
I'd just like to thank the mayor for all that he's been in support so far of our project. And we're very pleased to be able to do this, just to help the victims, to get their memories back, one photo at a time. And we are doing, like he said, this is all free of charge. There'll be restoration and reunification for all the victims who've lost their photos. We have several thousand right now and it's an ongoing process. It is a long process. So, we're asking the people to be patient and with us, but we're with us and please bring the photos in because we can't get them back if we don't have the photos in our possession. So, thank you so much for having me tonight.
Angela, where, Angela, where you located at so people can do that?
I brought some information cards that tell you all of our sites. We have a Facebook site and a website for the National Disaster Photo Rescue. We're actually just local people for Oklahoma Photo Rescue, which is the Facebook site. And that you can, there are drop off sites at Walgreens, Arbus Bank, General Depot and Fort Thunder Harley Davidson. They're official drop off sites, so you can drop off at any time. And then the photos will eventually get to the Oklahoma School of Photography. That's our main hub.
Well, thank you.
I'll leave these here so people can take them anytime. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held June 3rd, 2013. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of the special city council meeting held May 22nd, 2013. Item C is receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held March 5th, 2013, April 2nd, 2013, May 7th, 2013. Item D is approve the reappointment of Sid Porter and Eddie Vickers to the parks board for three year terms. Item E is renew the existing intergovernmental agreement for regional household hazardous waste collection and management with the City of Oklahoma City. Item F is approve land lease with the United States Postal Service for property located at 1600 South Broadway to provide a temporary location for postal services and more. And item G is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012-2013 in the amount of $2,491,383.66.
Move to proof?
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark M.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is consider rezoning application number 901 located in the southeast quarter of Section 14. Township 10 north, range 3 west, being south of Main Street and west of Eastern Avenue. From C3 General Commercial District to C3 PUD General Commercial District Plan Unit Development. And approve ordinance number 749-13, application Box Car Investments LLC. Jason Nedro, Planning Commission will hear the item on June 11th, 2013.
Mayor and council, this property consists of three acres. It is located south of Main Street along the west side of Eastern Avenue. On July 2nd, 2012, the Moore City Council approved rezoning application number 888 to C3 General Commercial. Since that time, a developer has removed the single family residence that was located on that property. And now the applicant is proposing to redevelop the property as a planned unit development with a 318 unit mini storage that utilizes architectural design to enhance the surrounding character of the neighborhood. Public water is located along southeastern avenue and public sewer is available on the northwest property line. Access is provided by Eastern Avenue. The property does not have access to the residential street Woods Drive that is in the Armstrong addition directly to the west of this property. And no curb cuts shall be granted for commercial properties to that local residential street. There is no flood plain located on this property. However, there is a significant drainage channel on the west boundary that abuts Woods Drive and it does release on the south end of the property. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant must provide engineered drainage study to determine whether or not detention shall be required and what improvements, if any, need to be made to that drainage, to the drainage system in order to accommodate their stormwater runoff. It should be noted that the study is not really intended to address problems that are currently existing, but really it's in order to address the issues that may come with increased stormwater runoff from that property. The applicant's proposal is for an architecturally enhanced mini storage that will add visual interest and variety along Eastern Avenue. The use of a PUD is a zoning tool that's meant to address concerns of incompatibility to the surrounding land uses. By utilizing a PUD, the city may relax certain development requirements in exchange for amenities that would not otherwise be required, but that work to create a unique and quality project. This PUD proposal includes the following amenities. No outdoor storage will be allowed. Masonry fencing will be required along the east property line. Building facades along the east side shall be a minimum of 80% brick, rock or stone and include architectural elements such as windows, shutters, eyebrow windows, and/or vents, cupulas, chimneys to match the exhibit E of the design statement, which I believe that you guys have a copy of that in your packet. A 35-foot green belt and drainage easement is proposed for the west property line that will eliminate buildings and concrete except for any drainage purposes within 35 feet of the western property line. All signs shall be limited to a maximum height of 15 feet and no more than 100 square feet per side. Signs will be limited in a number to a maximum of one per lot. So that means that there'd just be one sign for that facility. In exchange for these amenities, a developer is requesting some variances to city code. Along the north and west boundaries, where abutting residential wood fencing will be required only between the buildings themselves and not as a screen to the residential properties. And along the south boundary, no side yard setback will be required with the buildings establishing the site proof screening. The buildings will be constructed to meet fire marshal standards for zero lot line construction. The Planning Commission did hear this item last week. They did vote approval of this item four to two. They did have a couple of additions that they would like to have be seen included in the PUD design statement. The first is that any facade that faces residential land use must be bricked to meet the city code, which would be 75% excluding doors and windows. And the second one is that the landscaping along eastern must be served by automatic sprinkler system. The applicants are here. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Now, just so I get this straight, this is the same one we heard a couple of months ago and we told them if they brought it back as a PUD, we would definitely reconsider it, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Because we've looked at this before.
That's correct.
All right. And everything in, as far as your office is concerned, everything's okay?
Yes. The way the design statement is written is the picture that you have in your packet on page 109. The design statement describes that facade along eastern in quite detail and that's what would be required to be constructed if this is approved tonight.
So that's a very good rendition of what it would look like?
That's correct.
And the recommendations, are those, are those pretty much hard and fast as far as the intentions of the board?
Right. Those were the recommendations that Planning Commission had. Of course, they are just a recommendation body only. If you guys have any additions or deletions from those recommendations, you're certainly welcome to make those.
And what were the recommendations again, Elizabeth?
They were that any of the buildings that face a residential land use, which there, it's on the west side and some on the north side, a small portion, that those facades would be required to have our, meet our minimum bricking requirement per city code, which is 75%. The other requirement would be that the sprinkler system would be required for any of the landscaping along Eastern Avenue, which is obviously what would, most people would see driving down the road.
What do the applicant, what do they think about that?
I'll let you ask them that.
Okay.
Is there a standard for the sprinkler system that must be met and have these, have these exceptions been agreed to?
I don't really know. I think we would just do a typical sprinkler system that most commercial businesses will install. Of course, we would make sure, the intent is to make sure that the landscaping survives, you know, during our hot weather and grows. So, we would make sure the sprinkler system will support that. As to whether or not the applicants have agreed to these requirements, they did at the Planning Commission meeting. But you can address that with them if they have any additional concerns or if you guys do.
Elizabeth, the usage of a storage unit there at that location, does that go well with what that area is turning into?
Well, there's going to be a church, a large branded church facility just to the east of that, across the street on eastern. To the north is a...
It's going to be the east side station.
Right, yes.
That's to the south though.
Yeah, and there's vacant property to the south. To the north is going to be some heavier commercial businesses, like auto repair, that kind of stuff. And then there's a small strip center that, you know, has seen better days.
Was there any opposition to this at the Planning Commission meeting?
No, this has been through the Planning Commission now three times. Once for the original rezoning to C3 and then now twice for the mini storage. And there's, has not been any citizens present at those meetings.
Elizabeth, what type of trucks or vehicles normally, you may not even know this answer, but utilize storage units that might park in the streets or entryways and stuff like that? Any idea?
I'm sorry, the question was...
Well, sometimes, and I'll be able to talk to these guys about it, but I know storage units sometimes to me seem more like a light industrial type business. I just, I want to make sure that we're not gonna, you know, it's not always just we have trucks and things like that.
Right.
And I'm not an expert by any chance, so I mean, if any of you guys have opinions on that too.
Well, I have used a storage unit previously and never encountered anything like that. Usually they were always gated. You put your code in, drove in, but I never saw any tangering of vehicles, trucks or anything like that there. Because really those storage units really don't tolerate a large truck. I mean, they, I say tolerate, accommodate, but I'll let these guys.
Can anybody operate a business out of one of those?
No, no, that is absolutely not allowed. And I will say that we don't generally have a lot of code enforcement complaints about mini storages. If they started to do a lot of outdoor storage and businesses operating out of them, I have a feeling that we would start to get a lot of code enforcement calls and we never do.
And we certainly wouldn't let them park any vehicles on eastern.
Right. Or woods. I mean, that would be not acceptable.
Well, I think this would probably be the nicest one in town if it's built like that, for sure. Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Can I, can I ask you guys a couple of questions?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, yeah, come on up. My guess is that, so I guess that's, okay. Is it gonna be completely concrete all the way throughout the whole premises on the inside or is it gravel or?
I believe it's gonna be concrete.
Concrete, okay.
It's gonna, the surface area is gonna be just as nice as, as the unit, the colonial style. And this is gonna be class A facility here. And to address your question, Councilman McCraus, there's no outside parking or outside storage. And so you pull the U-Haul in, unload your stuff and you're gone. There won't be vehicles out there.
How much clearance is there going to be between the, between the curb line of the street and the entrance? My concern is, is that if a large truck turns in and has to wait for the gate to be opened, are they going to be obstructing traffic?
We, in this here, it's about 50 feet from the street to the first parking spot. So there's 50 feet there. You have two, three, four parking spots. So we're looking at 80, approximately 80 feet. So you could stack a couple, two or three vehicles there easily without impeding the flow of traffic. Gate opens relatively quickly and so I don't think you're gonna have any sort of congestion issues. That's been taken into consideration.
Now, that picture you have right there in your hand, that ring, is that the whole three acres or is that just part of it?
It is.
That's the three acres, okay.
Yes, yes.
And you guys were good with the recommendations of the additional fence and sprinkler system?
With the sprinkler system, we are, the, we respectfully ask your accommodation in the fence part. Almost the, the back part, we're asking not that it be brick because of the expense of that. Now, in the back, there is, there's a fence in the back and there's only three houses that really only see that. Plus, there's a 35-foot land. I'm not quite sure if it's an easement or if we're actually deeding 35 feet of area to you because the city was having drainage issues in that area. And the developers are fine with just giving that to the city to address those drainage issues, to do whatever you wish with that. And so, but the expense of bricking this entire facility all the way around is, is very burdensome.
So were you requesting the brick fence that's gonna be along the back, I mean, I'm sorry, the wood fence is gonna be along the back, very back row of units?
And the brick is in the front, is that correct? This is the engineer here, Steve Rollins.
It'll be masonry along the front, along eastern, and then the wood will be... The wood will be between, there are actually gaps in some of these buildings to allow drainage to go between the buildings. The wood will be in between any openings. So, you'll basically have the back of the building acting as the screen.
So brick on one side and wood around the other three sides of the property?
That's correct, yes.
The two sides will be flanked by commercial anyway. Is that, is that right, I believe, so?
I don't, I don't see that we need to require basic fence on the back there. I mean, it's basically not exposed to anybody. You never look out the back door or something, but it would be an unsightly, because in the back of it, basically just a solid building.
Right. And might I say, the money in this project, and it's so aesthetically pleasing because we're putting a lot of the money in the project on the front of it. So it has this colonial look. We don't want to have to defer that money, make the front, the front look worse to make the back look better. And we don't want that to happen. We want all the money and the aesthetics to be on the front. So when thousands of cars pass by there, that's a growing area, we want them to say, this is a beautiful facility.
So you are gonna fence the back, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Now, what would the wood fencing be like? Just a six, six-foot tall stockade, I guess, or?
Yes, sir.
You mean across the entire back? Mayor, is that what you're asking? I don't think that's the case.
The buildings act as...
Yeah, the building's gonna act as the screen and then they're gonna have wood fencing between the units and then on the ends where it opens up, looks like on the north and south side a little bit. So I don't believe there will be a fence across the back.
That, that is correct. That's an accurate statement.
Okay, understood.
But it's gonna be built where people can't come and go to the back, correct?
Correct.
And I would, I appreciate the applicant's diligence, going through the process multiple times willing to come back with all of the, just the assurance of what the facade, what the front of this is gonna, going to look like. And there hasn't been anybody come to any of the other meetings to oppose the project or any of the design of it.
I personally think it'd be an attractive position for that area. I personally think it'd be an attractive position for that area.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion, right?
We have a motion.
Do we have a second? Anybody wanna make a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion in a sec. Any other discussion?
Motion with, then without the brick around the west and south and north?
With the sprinklers.
We, uh, maybe I need to, uh, I make a motion that we approve this as presented, uh, less the recommendation by the planning commission for the masonry fence at the back.
We'll do the sprinklers, we'll take that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, and we do accept the recommendation of the planning commission for the sprinklers in front, so.
Do you want a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, you call for a vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Look forward to seeing them build, guys.
And and guys, thank you, thank you for working with us.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much for all your work on it, making it look nice, because we've had some builders that wouldn't, wouldn't have done all this, so we we do appreciate it. So thank you very much, guys.
Okay, item number five is considered adoption of resolution numbers, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, that was, I was reading that anyway, sorry. I just said the wrong number. Item number four is considered adoption of resolution number seven, seven, four, thirteen, extending a temporary moratorium regarding the development and construction upon lands within the northeast quarter of section eighteen, township ten north, range two west, Moore, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, also known as the Cleveland Heights Edition.
Mayor and council, uh, this item is to extend the, uh, it's now been two years that we've had a moratorium on this property. It's to extend it for another year for the Cleveland Heights Edition. Uh, the Cleveland Heights Edition is a paper subdivision from the nineteen sixties. Uh, there is no detention provided, no parkland, no right-of-way, additional right-of-way that is typically received in the platting process at Twelfth Street or Sunny Lane. This has been discussed in the past because there has not been any building permits issued in the past, simply because there's, it, there's no available water or sewer improvements to that property. However, that has recently changed. Uh, we do have a recent sewer line extension to the south. Uh, and now we have the development of the Sonoma Lakes Edition on the north side that will provide, um, water and sewer to the neighborhood. So we are requesting another year extension of this moratorium in order for us to resort, research the possibilities of of correcting some of these issues in the Cleveland Heights Edition.
Any questions we approve?
All right, second. Thank you both.
Will we face any new lawsuits out of a new moratorium?
Apparently, probably just amended.
Oh, we only worked against the lawsuits, right? Uh, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is considered adoption of resolution number seven, seven, five, one, three, approving a temporary moratorium regarding certain development and certain construction upon lands within the two thousand thirteen tornado area, being generally bounded by South Twenty-first Street on the south, uh, of South Santa Fe Avenue, on the west, South Fourth Street on the north, and Sunny Lane on the east.
Mayor and council, this moratorium is up for your consideration, uh, for the twenty thirteen tornado area. Uh, we did have nineteen different neighborhoods hit during the tornado. Uh, at current count, we have nine hundred and thirty-one homes that have been destroyed. Two hundred and six have major damage and six hundred and thirty-five has sustained minor damage. Uh, these are numbers that are continually updating as people determine that their insurance, um, has, uh, perhaps deemed their house a loss or maybe it's major damage that can be easily repaired. Uh, so these are always numbers in flux, but we're keeping on top of of how many homes have been destroyed and what the status is. What we have noticed in the field is that, uh, as our, the cleanup efforts are underway, uh, we do have some residents that are clearly ready to rebuild. Um, they've had their insurance settlement and they are ready to start planning again for their future. Uh, then, of course, we have the problem of those who are still in the cleanup process and they are causing a lot of safety concerns with street congestion. We have, of course, the city big debris trucks doing removal. Uh, there's construction equipment and one of the interesting added elements in this tornado is the hundreds upon hundreds of volunteers that we've had come in, that we are, of course, very thankful for. Uh, but it is a bit of a concerning issue with all of that activity around and then having volunteers in the mix. We are proposing a short wait time for the issuance of new and major rehab building permits. Uh, this will allow the congestion that some of those areas to thin out. We are proposing a maximum of forty-five days. However, this is with the understanding that as areas near completion of debris removal, uh, that the neighborhoods can open for building permits. Uh, we don't expect the entire area to have a forty-five wait limit. In fact, we don't necessarily even expect for any of the areas to have a forty-five day wait limit. Uh, but there is another issue that has kind of cropped up here in the last couple of weeks as to another reason why we are recommending a a short wait time. Uh, and that's because of the different, uh, the the different, um, age and makeup of those nineteen neighborhoods that were affected. We had a lot of them that were very old neighborhoods. Uh, they have older neighborhood covenants and restrictions that really don't, uh, apply a lot of our current standards to the way they used to do things. Um, so we've had a lot of interesting requests from homeowners in those neighborhoods for tin roofs to be, um, put on their homes. A lot of, or some of them have requested, uh, to not have any bricking. Um, some of them have requested no garages. So as we go through the neighborhood covenants and restrictions, we're realizing that there's a big hole in some of these areas that we do want the council to be cognizant of. Um, and of course, as a, as these neighborhoods recover, we want to set them up in the best possible situation to succeed and thrive in the future. Uh, so some of the things that, uh, this council may want to consider, um, setting standards on would be a minimum square footage, a minimum bricking requirement, roofing material requirements, uh, whether or not sidewalks should be required. And of course, we do have the issue that there are some non-conforming lots and interesting zoning, uh, that will make, uh, some interesting topics in the office. We have three PUDs that were approved many years ago. Uh, we have some, a lot of R-two zoning that's going to create some, uh, some discussion, I have no doubt, with some of the property owners. Uh, we have already approached the more home builders to just discuss the possibilities of establishing some type of minimum requirements. Uh, they were in in general agreement that this would be a good idea, especially in the older neighborhoods. Um, and so if this moratorium is approved for any length of time, it would give us as staff and you as council some time to determine if those minimum requirements are necessary and if they are necessary, what exactly should they be? Uh, if you have any questions?
I just think it's a good idea because I think that, um, um, it's, you know, that by developing some standards and so forth, that we're simply protecting the property values of all the homeowners that are gonna rebuild in there. And if you just have a hodgepodge of things, then the property values would tend to decline and so forth. So I, I, I really feel like that, uh, we do need to develop, uh, some standards and it's, it's not with the idea that we're trying to, you know, develop a cookie cutter model or anything like that, but just, uh, that, uh, we want, uh, housing that will, uh, complement, uh, the area and so forth.
No tin roofs. Well, I think the people building back for the, for the most part will have an expectation of having their neighbor's house similar in, in style of what it was. You know, not a weird design, having a garage, having a composition roof. And I think that's a reasonable expectation and I think we need to make sure that that ex, that expectation is followed through with, um, from the city's point of view.
They're on Eagle Drive, though. Those houses were built by a, there were two bedroom, one back, no garage and no garage.
Yeah, and if that's what, if that's what was there already, that's fine, but the majority of those were brick houses with a garage and that type of thing.
I think we were all pretty appalled when they built them originally, but, you know?
Yeah.
Elizabeth, how much time do you guys need to kind of go through this?
Well, what, I mean, at least for the next two weeks. I mean, obviously, anything that's going to be enforced would have to be passed by council. Um, and I think that that would give, you know, two weeks. I mean, we could probably have some good, pretty good ideas at that time if you wanted us to come back and just kind of share those with you.
Yes.
I mean, I think that would be a good starting place.
One of the things that we had did, we did last time, we've had a resolution basically to put on hurricane clamps and all that. And it was kind of like, okay, we'll do it. Well, nobody actually put those on and I would like to see an ordinance next meeting that those are mandatory. So if there are gonna be any if or buts about it, you're gonna put them on. So we're tired of chasing people, looking for people in the debris.
Let me ask you, are are there any residential areas in town that we permit metal roofs?
Probably agriculture. I think there's some in agriculture.
Because there are some high-dollar metal roofs out there that would be very appropriate for any house in Moore, Oklahoma. And we shouldn't necessarily make a blatant statement that excludes a homeowner from putting that kind of roof on their house. It's indistinguishable from a composition roof, but it's a far superior roof than most of our people have.
What we would do is bring back an ordinance proposal at the next, pardon me, council meeting with what, what the mayor says as far as the stripes. So we, uh, the mayor's already had that discussion with me and we will absolutely do that. The other, um, we, we think we have a pretty good idea of what those items should be and we would bring that back in an ordinance format. And, you know, you'll have that in advance, of course. We can look at that, make some amendments if necessary, but we'll need to put it in place fairly quickly because although we're asking for this short moratorium, uh, we also want people to begin reconstruction of their homes as soon as possible. Thirty, forty-five days out, I don't think is, um, is too much, uh, too long to wait in terms of not, not only getting these standards in place, but also giving people time to get their plans ready to go and that sort of thing. I don't think there's many out there today that are ready to go, but there may be a few.
What about the utilities? Has the, uh, infrastructure been damaged that way? Pretty much delay there?
Oh, there's probably been some sewer, uh, service lines damaged or buried or whatever. And we're working on water meters that get smashed and all that sort of thing, which is just normal business after we have one of these events with the debris, all that on the curb and all that. But we're working on that, but it'll, it'll take a little while to get all that in shape too, yes.
Well, what about the electric gas utilities?
I, I don't know about those, but I think they're.
They're looking, O and G's look to go underground as much as possible and probably the only place they will throw will be East of San Antonio. And O G and E told me that they maybe go back over there in the law areas if they're gonna try to run underground fees to those houses who are totally destroyed. Is that accurate, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Boy, put you on the spot, man.
It's like O G and E told you that we're gonna stand by.
You just made it up. But thanks. One of the things, though, if we wait too long, if you wait too long before anybody is allowed to build, they're gonna look at their neighbor and say, you know, I cleaned all mine up and I got it done. What was the point? And the other guy's gonna go, well, I'll just wait and I don't have to clean it up yet. I got sixty more days or whatever. It's like, that's gonna be a problem. I think we should let them build and get on with it. I mean, it's real simple. We clean it up and we build it back. I don't think the government should stand in their way.
And I would just have a question about, uh, the, some of the homes on Eagle and you'd indicated that when those were originally built, you guys were, I guess, disappointed in the product that was there. So would this be an opportunity to, uh, maybe change that? Or are we gonna have to allow them to build something back just like what was there?
If if you're only insured for sixty thousand dollars, that's all you got. You don't have.
Were a lot of those homes privately owned or are they rental properties?
Most of them were owned, they tell me, by single parents with children. So that's, therein lies the problem.
Well, most of these policies have, um, have a small endorsement on them that allow, um, code changes. If that was code changes, it would have to be enforced the day of the tornado. So anything that we require new will be paid out of their pockets. The insurance company's not gonna pay those. And it's gonna, it's gonna, I mean, I don't disagree with the concept, it's gonna add a burden, burden on the people that are rebuilding their homes.
Now, with regards to the permits, though, once we get the restrictions in place, then you, the, your department can start issuing permits at your discretion before forty-five days, is that?
That's what the resolution in front of you says, yes.
So do you think by the next council meeting, you could have these ordinances done, that we could do that and look at it and maybe put that on as the, towards the last of the agenda? So if we need to do these by emergency, we can?
Absolutely.
I'm okay with that, two weeks. But I don't want to go longer than two weeks. It's not fair to people out there that are living somewhere. You know, if I was living with my in-laws or whatever, I wouldn't like that at all, so. I don't have any in-laws, but if I did, I wouldn't want to be either.
One of the things we also considered was essentially taking a look at the covenants and most of these neighborhoods have covenants. Some of them don't, though, and are older, but taking a look at the covenants and more or less require what the covenants in that addition required initially. That's, that's one way kind of to do it. Um, but again, some of the oldest areas over there around Plaza, uh, they probably have expired. The covenants have expired. Um, and unless we do something different, then they can build a metal roof or they can build a eight-hundred-foot house or they can build a two-thousand-foot house and they can build it with no brick or they can build it with a hundred percent brick, anything they want.
Or with no garage.
Or with no garage.
Well, it's not my choice, but, you know, I don't, I don't think it's the time to go in and do a major redevelopment of the area based off the citizens' backs. It's, it's, it's not time for that. That's, that's not our function, I don't believe. I think it's just to get them back into the house they had.
I think if we, if we can do it, though, to where it's not a financial burden, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Now's the time to do it.
I would agree.
But you're right, though, we can't make people.
Well, I go back to, there's an expectation to have something similar, new construction, but similar in construction as to what was there already and that would be my only request. I think that's the expectation of the people that are left out there that are next-door neighbors. I promise you, it's not gonna be the expectation of everybody that's gonna be buying a lot and coming in and try to build something. That's what I'm saying. If I expect my neighbor's new house to look similar in style as what was already there before. It, it should be brick. It should have a comp roof. It should have a garage. I think it's fair. And I think it's fair. I think the city should, should support that.
Yeah, because an area like that could, um, turn into a real nightmare.
You could have two or three things built in an area that would affect the rest of the area completely.
And there, there are people that see those lots as, uh, being something they can buy cheaply and, and erect a, uh, a structure there that will rent, uh, for minimum dollars and it'd be the scourge of the whole neighborhood.
So would we have to put a different restriction on each and every neighborhood, like depending on the larger neighborhoods down to the smaller neighborhoods?
Right. The, um, there is a, a map in your agenda packet that has a, basically the map of the tornado area. And I, if you were able to print it out or see it in color, you can see that we can get down to very specific parcel-by-parcel information, which is something new that we haven't been able to do in the other tornadoes. And so, yes, we can actually group, um, a lot of these neighborhoods together and, and start to brand it as an area, such as the Plaza Towers area, um, which would be anything around the Plaza Towers School. The Foxglove area, even though it incorporates, um, three or four different plats, it's still considered one neighborhood. Um, so we can develop things that are appropriate for each neighborhood because there's such differing neighborhoods in this event.
That was my concern, is putting restrictions on someone and who was accustomed to one size and.
Yeah, wouldn't it be the same restrictions for east side, uh, more as west side quite likely?
Yeah, it'd be based on, uh, what was there previously and what were minimum standards were, either through the homeowners association or whatever.
Yeah, and I can see on the brick and the roof and things, but talking about, we're talking about square footage and, and different things.
I would have to defer to Randy about that, I don't know that you can make separate laws for separate neighborhoods.
We have zoning restrictions for some neighborhoods on time, I mean, I think we can craft and design these.
But those are covenants, though, we've never enforced covenants before.
Well, we're gonna look, they want to have to look at the covenants and see how many are still out there, how many are still existing, whether they have, uh, you know, just expired. And then, uh, look at building back comparable to what we're.
Okay, you're clear with the attorney, so go for it.
Well, I, I was happy with the reconstruction in ninety-nine, just looking at the neighborhoods that were built back and the homes were, I think it's because it was new stuff. They were nicer homes and newer construction and blended, blended well. You could definitely tell when you went from something new to something old, but overall, I think it enhanced those communities, those neighborhoods. And I think the same will be here, just, just as long as we can, you know, have good quality homes for them.
And for those who are, are building back and so forth, uh, who were either underinsured or whatever, there, there's, if I'm not mistaken, there's some FEMA and SBA money available to help those people.
SBA is where they're gonna be able to get very cheap money to rebuild if that's what they wanna do, okay?
Yeah, something else that, that's come up, some people have nothing but slab, some people have three fourths to eighty percent of the good house. Are we not gonna give them a permit to go ahead and finish their house?
That's considered a minor damage and we have been, yes, we have been.
The ones that are livable.
What's the, okay, what's the ones that are semi-destroyed that are not livable, what are those called?
Major damage.
Just major damage, that's it?
Well, that's the classification, yeah, yeah.
So are we gonna require that those be torn down and start over?
No.
No. I mean, it's gonna be up to their insurance company and them basically as to what goes back.
Okay.
And if the insurance company says it's rebuildable, then they'll have to come and get a building permit to remodel and renovate the home.
But will those fall in with the new regulations or will they still be the old ones?
In my opinion, if you're not, um, changing the, the basic footprint of your house, uh, you can just come in today if you wanted to and, and pull a remodel permit. And that's what they've been doing.
And that's something else we need to tell everybody, we're waiving the permit fees, there's no charge on those, as long as everybody knows, okay?
So what I'm about to complete rebuilds essentially would be under this, under what we're talking about.
Correct.
Okay, so can you get it done in two weeks?
I can certainly have something for you guys to review, sure.
Is that okay with you guys?
Two weeks. I, I, I appreciate you doing it, I think it's a good idea.
Now, where do we stand on this moratorium?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, and if we need to, we'll stand again.
So we're gonna go to the moratorium for a two week period.
We'll put that on the last of the agenda for next time, does that, does that work? Now, can we, can we put a, an emergency clause on the other items, Randy, since we've declared this a disaster anyway?
Well, that all depends on what the regulations are, once you take a look at those.
Okay, all right. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Do we have a motion please?
No.
I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Okay.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We, any other discussion?
For the full forty-five days?
For two weeks.
For two weeks.
For two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks.
Either, either way, it really doesn't matter because we're gonna reconsider it in two weeks anyways.
In the next meeting, okay, would you call for the vote please?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider authorizing staff to solicit requests for proposals for a housing market study to be used for further disaster recovery grant opportunities.
Mayor and council, uh, this item is to, uh, request, uh, permission to go out to bid, or I'm sorry, RP's, request for proposals, uh, to complete a, uh, comprehensive housing market analysis, uh, for the city. We have been in contact with HUD, uh, about potential grant funding that is available through several different pots of money. And the first step in any of those is to have this study, uh, for your city. So what we would be requesting a firm to do would be to assess the current and future housing needs, to formulate initiatives for affordable housing and examine current land use and economic development as a result of the May twentieth tornado. The estimated cost for one of these studies is, uh, around ten to thirty thousand dollars. And again, this would be the basis for, uh, our HUD disaster recovery grant funding. Uh, this would include additional, uh, CDBG funds, uh, that can typically be used in a variety of different ways to help us in the long-term recovery.
Just to give you a little bit of an idea of what we're talking about, of course, we don't know anything about the dollars yet, but, um, Joplin, um, went through this process and with HUD funds and other funds, they've got commitments of about a hundred and fifty-ish million dollars from the federal government to build various, I mean, a library and various things like that, that their housing market and then a, the second step to it is, is just us looking at our needs and making a proposal to HUD in terms of here's what we think we need for our community to redevelop and recover in the long term. And, and they got tens of millions of dollars and, you know, there's no promises by any means, but there's some monies out there that we may have access to, uh, through HUD that, um, could be significant.
And through people who understand that entire process.
Yes, absolutely.
And, uh, I can speak to that, Secretary Donovan called me right after this happened, uh, and anyway, he offered his support and basically, he gave us our, um, CDBG grant money for next year, even though we were phased out of the CDBG money. And he did tell me that basically, once we do this, he, he got in contact with Elizabeth, with his staff, and said if we do this, then there's a possibility for more monies out there. So he was nice enough to give us a grant right up front, so I think it would be wise.
And it's also my understanding that, I think, Joplin, when they finally made their final presentation, it was, it was, uh, a lot of money, like one point nine billion dollars. And from that was a hundred fifty, a hundred and seventy-eight million. And the word that I got was that they encouraged Joplin to dream big.
Right.
And to, you know, what is it that you want and that you need to do to help your city get back to where it needs to be?
There's, I've been told there's one caveat with this funding, which is you can't just replace what you had, you have to make it better.
What an opportunity. We, we can do that, yeah.
I think so.
I'd make a motion we approve this, uh.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider authorizing the purchase of three Federal Signal Model, uh, M zero D five zero two zero B, outdoor warning sirens in the amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars, eighty cents each, and one Federal Signal Model five zero eight DC outdoor warning siren in the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred seventy-eight dollars, for a grand total of ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-eight dollars, twenty cents. This purchase is a factory direct from the Federal Signal Corporation and the equipment is a sole source, therefore waiving competitive bidding pursuant to section seven dash two oh five of the Moore Municipal Code.
Good evening, mayor and council, uh, what we have before you this evening is a request to replace several of our outdoor warning sirens that were either destroyed or severely damaged, uh, in either the May twentieth tornado, uh, or in the May thirty-first tornado. Uh, we would like to ask you this evening if you would consider, uh, amending the item we have in front of you. About ten minutes before council, my vendor, uh, provided me with a report that shows that we have one more siren that has been, uh, is in need of replacement. Uh, so if, if you would consider amending this to purchasing four of the Model fifty twenties, uh, rather than three, uh, and that changes your grand total amount to one hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. What we have for you is, uh, these tornado siren that was just north of nineteenth and Santa Fe. It was a Federal Model two T twenty-two, was purchased back in the late seventies. It took us a week and a half to find that siren. Although Steve Sean's crews very graciously did find it and retrieved it, uh, and we have that, uh, but it, it was totally destroyed, we, it has to be replaced. Uh, we have a siren, uh, one of the more modern sirens, uh, was at Southwest Tenth and Ridgeway. Uh, it also snapped off the pole, it was completely destroyed, I have pictures of both of these, uh, if you'd like to see them. Uh, we have two more sirens, one siren, uh, was, uh, at the entrance to the Rock Creek Edition. Uh, it's still in the air, believe it or not, it's functional, but man, it took a beating and my contractor says that, uh, it was, um, every siren caught on, it was badly damaged, uh, it was rendering the siren non-reparable, the control cabinet was damaged, uh, and the vendor no longer supports that particular type of electronics, so, uh, we need to completely replace it. Uh, the same goes with the siren down here about Southwest Twelfth and Broadway. Uh, again, uh, took significant, uh, damage to the head of it. The, uh, the new style siren head doesn't have the same wearing configuration as the controllers that we currently have, so it needs to be replaced. And then we found out tonight, uh, that as a result of the May thirty-first storm, uh, we had the siren that's at Buck Thomas Park, uh, either took a severe lightning strike or, uh, with all the power, uh, issues that were going on the area, apparently the electronics on that siren were completely blown out, every amplifier, the back plane, uh, everything in it. Again, that unit's no longer supported, uh, with the electronics, so we're gonna have to replace the whole thing there.
Okay, my question is to Randy again, I'm wearing you out tonight, I'm sure, but can we change the agenda item from?
Yes, sir, the motion first, amend the agenda item for the purchase of four and then I'll.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda item to, uh, for the purchase of four, uh, of these Federal Signal models and, uh.
Okay.
It's, it's four of the one mo- four of the one model and one of the, the other model.
Right.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
I'll second the motion that is proposed.
Just to note also, the ones that are destroyed in the storm will be eligible for some reimbursement through FEMA, so we may get seventy, seventy-five percent or something like that.
Insurance or FEMA and.
Insurance and or FEMA, yes, that's right.
Okay. Just real quick, um, how, once it's passed and how long will it be, how long will it take before they're up and running?
My vendor advised that he's already been in contact with the factory and that they have every expectation of expediting our order. Now, beyond that, I can't tell you.
Okay.
But they're, they're, they're waiting on our order right now.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda item, would you call for the vote please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll consider authorizing the purchase of four Signal Model, uh, five oh two zero B models and one of the Model five oh eight DC outdoor warning sirens, who would have a motion for that?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, thank you, thank you both. Any other discussion on that? The sooner the better, last night, I don't know if you guys know or not, but Brom's roof blew off in a seventy to ninety mile an hour wind gust last night, so they're fixing that back, they'll have it back tomorrow. They had quite a crew out there today.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
Mayor, I, I might note that we do have, uh, several sirens that are functional, uh, we do have coverage throughout town. Our vendor's been working very hard with us to, uh, to get these back in operation and, and fortunately, we've had several wind storms and lightning storms since then and, you know, lightning just tears the sirens up and they're, they're a big hunk of metal fifty feet in the air, so, uh, we're, we have been working pretty diligently to try and keep those running and, and we do have coverage if we need.
Yeah, you guys are doing a great job, thanks, you're doing a great job. Item number eight is consider ordinance number seven five zero one three, temporarily suspending in the affected area the requirements of chapter four, section eight dash four oh eight of the City Code of Moore, Oklahoma, entitled Notice to Remove from Private Property and Authorizing Right of Entry Upon Private Property in the Affected Area to Post Forty-Eight Hour Notice Up to Remove Disaster-Generated Junk Vehicles Authorizing Impound After Forty-Eight Hours, Authorizing Right of Entry Upon Private Property in the Affected Area of the Purpose of Impounding Disaster-Generated Junk Vehicles, Providing for the Adoption of Temporary Procedures, Providing for Notice of Impound, Providing for the Hearing Repealer, Saving Clause, Codification, Severability, and Declaring an Emergency.
Mayor, what this boils down to is we're trying to, um, expedite the removal of these vehicles or junk vehicles that are in the neighborhoods and all over the disaster-affected areas. Generally, what we would be required to do is give a ten-day notice, this is just temporarily changing that till we get these vehicles gone to a two-day notice. We'll go onto the properties, stick a sticker on the vehicle, give them, uh, forty-eight hours to remove it, if they don't, we'll have them towed away.
Is that just done through a regular rotation on the record?
It'll be the record rotation, the ones that are on our current rotation would do that, yes.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? No, would you call? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just got one for you, what do you do when you can't identify a vehicle?
Yeah, there's several out there.
I'm not sure, other than it's, it's a hunk of metal and some, I think we knew it was a vehicle at some time, so they'll haul it away.
Yeah, 'cause I was looking at one, I couldn't, I didn't remember on it.
It's pretty sad.
I think what they've been doing is keeping them for thirty days without, um, any storage charges and then after that, um, the, they go through the procedures they would normally go through to dispose of a car that's in their yard.
Okay, would you call for that please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Uh, at this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number nine is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held June third, two thousand thirteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen in the amount of seven hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars, ninety-four cents.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you very much, thanks.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other claims or questions, everybody get their questions answered on the, uh, claims or any notes or change to the minutes, not, would you call for the vote?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting. Item number ten is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held June. held June third, two thousand thirteen. Item B is approve ratif- and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen in the amount of seventy-four thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars, sixty-eight cents.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, thank you both. Okay, with that being said, any notes or changes to the minutes or any notes or changes to the claims? Not which call for the vote?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. This time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Item eleven is the roll call. Which call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Terry Cavanagh.
Here. Item twelve is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held June third, two thousand thirteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Which call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes. Item thirteen is our director's report.
Thank you, Chairman Cavanagh. Well, on the economic development front, we are open for business. I will continue to repeat that and we've been extremely fortunate with our local media who have really helped us push that message out and I can't say enough about the resiliency of our commercial property owners and our business owners. They have stuck with us and we are hopefully paying it back to them and paying that forward and I know our citizens are doing their part and I know even other citizens are doing their part in coming in and shopping at our businesses. A great triumph, triumph the other day was Hemis Restaurant opened and as you all know, that strip was badly damaged there and so they were open for business last week and as are some of the businesses also in that strip center. So that just kinda goes to show when you're, you know, on it and ready and out wanting to get open, you can do it. But of course, others had far more damage than they did, but we were excited to see them open. And again, we're continuing to ask people to come in to just shop local and we're doing our best to help our businesses show that they are open and helping them get on social media as best as they can and through the Chamber of Commerce. I know they're also offering assistance to these businesses who may not have ever used social media before, but now's a great time. If you're gonna use it, you might as well use it now. So anyway, we're proud of them and we're proud of everybody for keeping local here and doing their part and it's a, it's a huge help. Also to say that we actually haven't slowed down as far as the interest in our community and as you all know, May twentieth, I was actually at a conference in the morning. Councilman Ham and I were recruiting businesses and talking about what a wonderful community this was and how what a, you know, growing, thriving community is, is. Oh, it's even better now though. And now, i- it's the, everybody can see it and we have not slowed down. So we are taking calls constantly of developers very, very much still interested in the area and a lot of exciting things that are on the forefront for us. So just suffice to say that everything is good and is still good and is getting better every day. Old School Bagel is under construction. They're gonna build out the space in the Alfredo Shopping Center just to the very end and I think they have their sign up now, so if you guys wanna go by, they're not obviously open yet, but that was a process, process we'd worked on many months ago and are so proud that they are getting ready to open and getting close.
Did you by chance have an opportunity to observe the Warren this weekend?
I did observe the Warren.
I don't think I've ever seen that many cars, that's what there was.
It was tremendous and again, if you all just need a, need a boost of your spirit, I would suggest that you drive around town and I, to see a line at the Taco Mayo Drive-Thru does my heart good and to drive on the access road in front of the Warren Theater and then to get emails from Bill Warren talking about the amazing attendance that they've had and their commitment to our city and our city's commitment to them is, it's everything. So yeah, it's awesome and, but don't stop. You can see it another time. It's a great movie, so go back and see it twice and three times.
And just speaking, speaking of the, the Warren, I, I did, I went there, saw a couple of movies and they were sold out, so we went to another one and, and I.
At the Warren?
Yes, at the Warren.
Yes, okay.
Movie and I, I remember sending you a text saying, hey, tell Mr. Warren I'm here with some friends and then I, you some friends, you have friends.
Yeah, I, I thought that was the amazing part of the text, that you were there with friends, but I, I got, I got it later that the amazing part was they were sold out, but you gotta have a little humor.
Yes, you do.
It helped me feel better. At Oliveto Restaurant, we have been so excited to welcome them and they are very near to opening and they are just so excited and cannot get open fast enough, so they're not deterred and they are more excited than ever and they will breathe that enthusiasm, I have no doubt, and they welcome other businesses to come in and join them in our resurgence. So they're gonna be open for business very soon with some amazing Italian food and we're gonna be so happy there between Panda Express and Furs. On the public information side, our marketing has shifted. We're shifting focus a bit, but we are definitely still keeping the public informed as best we can on anything that's pertinent information and we are managing the media requests as they continue to come in. And of course, we thank you all for your assistance in that and for all of the staff and department heads that have been mostly gracious with the, making themselves available and it's important that we continue to tell our story and that we continue to honor everything that has happened here and lift up our citizens as the heroes that they are and just again, tell the story exactly as it, as it is and as it was and how amazing these things are. So we're, we're glad to tell those stories and we're proud of our community, so I know we all are. With that, I'll answer any questions or?
Thank you, Deidre. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that all the members that were present before are still present. Item fourteen, A is citizens' form for items not on the agenda. Randall, I don't know how to say your name, but come on up. How do you pronounce that?
Gushwind.
Okay.
Randall Gushwind. Good evening to the, to the mayor, the city manager, the elderman, to the folks, to the citizens of Moore. My name's Randall Gushwind. I'm a manufacturer rep for composite building systems. We build dome shaped buildings all over the world and we feel that our buildings are, are something that could be well utilized here in the city of Moore. One thing I noticed when I first came into Moore was the shape of your water towers and the way the, uh, their shape, either domes or cylindrical in shape and it's because of their high survivability rate in high winds and tornadoes. And I would think that you'd also would like to have that same kind of coefficient when it comes to the way the houses are built. And why should houses in Moore have a high drag coefficient when the, their water towers have a very low drag coefficient? So at the same time, I, I also wanted to notice from that thing, you have the Doppler radars. They're, uh, they have a lot of importance with you all here in Moore, keeping track of where the tornadoes are. They are also covered with a dome type of structure to protect them as well as the FAA radar. And so, and with saying that, we, we'd like to present to you a shape of the future of something that we believe will take care of the children, your livestock, your businesses, your cars and trucks, anything that has to do with folks in Moore being able to survive the next tornado. And so I'd like to go on to say that we also believe that in going to this kind of a structure that has been tested at the Texas Tech tornado lab at over two hundred and twenty miles an hour, had a two by four come out, hit the material, glanced off it, kept going. Metal roofs, when they're up against the structure, two by four goes right through the metal roof. It cannot withstand it. We also believe after the hurricanes and tornadoes that our product has been through down on the Gulf Coast, that grapefruit sized hail will bounce off it because our structure has an eight thousand PSI rating. Again, this is a project, product that is not well known up here in Oklahoma and the reason I'm here is because of the statements that your representative McBride said on Fox News that I heard in El Paso, Texas, as well as my boss heard in Mississippi. And we thought that with what he said as far as taking a very big interest and wanting to increase your, the efficiency of your building codes, that maybe we might be able to bring this product into town as well as bringing a manufacturing plant here into town to create more jobs. We have moved manufacturing plants around the world to build these structures. One of them was moved to the Marshall Islands under a Boeing contract where we replaced every single building at the Quagellina Toe in the Marshall Islands under the, under the Army's Space and Air Defense Command. And when that was done, every single building was gotten rid of, which was rusted out mobile homes or whatever. Had a trouble with mold. We got rid of the mold problem. We got rid of the water problem. We got rid of all kinds of problems by going to these dome structures. Now they've survived typhoons, high winds, water, whatever, and they're very happy with them. And because of that, the Colonel who was in charge of this Army base, she retired to El Paso, Texas, and when she did, she built a five thousand, five hundred square foot dome structure in El Paso. As a part of her retirement, she decided that she wanted to take care of First Armored Division's active duty soldiers' pets when they go overseas, so she built this dome in the shape of a team where the front section had her living quarters with her husband, conference room, kitchens, other things in the back part. It was all for the animals. And it was the first one that was ever built in El Paso and I was absolutely struck by just how efficient it was by the fact it was in the shape of a dome and it was thirty percent more efficient than any house structure that has square walls. Automatically thirty percent more heated and cooled efficient. So when that was done, I, I jumped on board and started as a real estate broker developer in El Paso. We started developing subdivisions in El Paso. We have a tremendous problem, not with so much tornadoes, but with heat and trying to keep the cost of billions to a minimum at twenty-seven dollars a square foot. You can't beat it. I would think the houses here cost a heck of a lot more than twenty-seven dollars a square foot. So with that being said, I want to go on to other subjects such as your children's schools. If the children's school that had lost the children's lives had been, had one of these buildings either inside of it or outside of it, I am pretty doggone sure those kids would have survived. I'm not God and I wouldn't say that, I said the Titanic wouldn't sink, but at the same time, I have a strong belief from thirty years of experience with these buildings now, that they would have a very high probability of surviving in a tornado, especially in hurricanes. So, um, I wanted to go on to tell you all that these buildings have been used for jails. Thirty caliber bullets have been shot at this stuff and it has not penetrated. It is a Kevlar type of composite. It is not Kevlar, but they can add Kevlar to the chemical mix as they're making it up. They do make jails out of this all over the south now. They do build school buildings out of this all over the south. Duplexes, commercial buildings, storage facilities, all are now being made out of this stuff because down south, Georgia, Mississippi, Louisiana, they've had so many hurricanes come through the last few years that everybody's just tired of rebuilding. They wanna build something that they're not going to rebuild and they've had tremendous luck with these buildings. So if I can, I can show you one particular dome building that's out on the beach in Florida that has survived three hurricanes within the last ten years and was the only building left on the beach all three times and all three times, there was no water damage. Had an eighteen foot wall of water go over it. It receded and it was still there. So we have a very high confidence that this is the type of building that should be incorporated into the way things are rebuilt here in Moore. We also suggest one other thing that we are going over with Dr. Chris, Dr. Chris, what's his name, Ramsire, over here at the Fears Structural Engineering Lab at University of Oklahoma at Norman, to dispute anything that Texas Tech has said about our buildings or any of the things that have been, that has gone through. I talked to him the other day and, and we'll go see him tomorrow and we're gonna start doing the, whatever testing he wants to do. We're more than happy to do the testing here because it's already been done at Texas Tech. So is there any, is there any kind of questions that you might have for me as far as this product, helping to rebuild Moore, Oklahoma? I'd be more than happy to answer.
But everyone, see this at the warranty, the rate, anybody else seen this? I don't know where it started.
It hadn't been down here in the South. Sheet metal roofs, storage buildings made out of metal do not survive at the Texas Tech tornado lab. This stuff does. It's eight thousand PSI. It's made out of, has an R twenty-eight rating. It takes one day for eight guys with a wind not blowing to build a sixteen hundred square foot building that's all bolted together. It can be relocated, so if you're having more temporary buildings at the, at the schools, the Moore Independent School District, it could be moved for emergency classrooms. It can be moved for emergency housing. With our country being seventeen trillion dollars in debt, who knows how much longer FEMA and all these other government agencies are gonna last. My boss, the way I think is you try to build where you don't have to rebuild. You build something that's either we can build it three quarters of an inch thick or four inches thick, but we guarantee that we believe this kind of a building is the shape of the future and the way communities should be going when they want to build buildings that will last for three hundred years. The insulation of the, of the, the silicon gel that we put in it has a life expectancy now of seventy-five years with a special 3M tape that goes over the top of those seams. So, and there's no painting, no maintenance to any of these buildings. So are there any other questions?
You talk about the material that's used. Does that mean that, in order to accomplish this protection against storms and so forth, that it has to be built in a dome shape?
No, we build them in box domes. We build them in elongated domes. We build them in circular domes. Uh, we have built hangars out of this material where you can park a large plane. It's been, it's been, it's been done. We have structures that are nine hundred feet long built for the military. We have structures built in Afghanistan, India, Japan, Africa. They're all over the world now. So, um, like I said, we'd love to be able to come in and be a part of the rebuilding of Moore. I am not a person who would be selling to the public. I'd be only trying to sell to other contractors or to people who would be selling to the public. So I'm, I'm, I'm just been trying to get the word out. I've had tremendous success at Grandberry, Texas, at Blanket, Texas, at Owen, Texas, because they had the tornado right before you all did. And so they're in the process of building through habitat for humanity because they love the way that it can be put together so fast and you're, it has the durability that your regular matchstick home cannot even come close to. And on top of that, there's no shingles to ever fool with again. There's no paintings ever fooled again. Once it's done, it's done.
Have there ever, is there any communities that have embraced this or is it just homes and hodgepodge of buildings tearing there?
It has been a shotgun effect through the different states as far as whether they're building the jails out of it in Alabama, Georgia, Mississippi. It's going over a heck of a last summer now than it was ten years ago. And again, it has been a product that once it's introduced and once it gets into a community, it pretty much proves itself.
Well, appreciate you coming up and doing your presentation. We need to move on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have, anyone else signed up? No one else signed up? Anyone else wanna speak? Items, item B is from the city manager or the council, or excuse me, from the city council or trustees.
I had a quick question. Do, does the city manager's office, do you guys know if there are organizations here in town that are helping the citizens out in town? And the reason I ask is that there are still people that want to contribute financially to help people out. There's a question of if they give to. There's a question of if they give to the organizations right now, are they still in town helping? Or they, have they moved on down the road, you know?
We have a deal that, uh, that, uh, there's special groups that are still helping out that are finding little different things that aren't covered by insurance and stuff. One of them is the Highland East Bandroom was wiped out. All of the kids' instruments were lost. And I worked with a group today from the Philippines, the International Church of Christ. And they donated fifty thousand dollars for the kids to have band instruments for next year. So they will have band. And, uh, we're supposed to do the presentation at Westmore on Saturday. There's a couple of other groups, um, that I've heard about where they're not covered by insurance. They were renting, what have you. So, uh, there's pockets out there and there's, and I don't wanna speak for the Red Cross because I, I can't. But they have set up that building at Westmore that has thirty-six different organizations besides theirs and that, that dole out monies and help and products for anybody that needs it on an as-needed basis. And it was taking a long time because there were so many applicants up there, but I do appreciate their efforts to, to set that up. Except, everybody up there is volunteer. So it was, it was pretty nice to see that. Specifically, I don't know of any.
Yeah, 'cause I know there, there, I've been asked and I honestly don't know the answer. Could I, 'cause I know that tens of millions of dollars have been donated, you know, to.
I can speak with some firsthand knowledge of, of these things. And from a couple of different perspectives, let me tell you what they are. A, I have an in with Red Cross, uh, and you all know about that. Uh, but I'm also on the board of the Central Oklahoma, United Way of Central Oklahoma. I'm on the board of directors and I'm also on the committee, that's special committee that's been set aside to, uh, review the request for funding for long-term tornado recovery. And, um, Red Cross is still here at the Mark, as they call it, uh, which is what the mayor was talking about. But they're not here with their vans anymore. They're transitioning out of that and feeding in the neighborhoods and all that. And there will be a long, what they call a long-term recovery, uh, committee, uh, set up that, um, between Red Cross and United Way of Oklahoma, Central Oklahoma. I don't know the exact numbers, but we're talking about thirty, forty million dollars. It's gonna be spent only on the recovery, tornado recovery in all of the areas, not just Moore, but all the areas in the state. Red Cross was very generously donated to by people everywhere. Uh, United Way of Central Oklahoma was as well. The con, the concert that the mayor was at and that, um, was the first concert that was done. All the proceeds went to United Way. Toby Keith's concert that's coming up, all of those proceeds are going to United Way. We have a presence not only on the board, but we also go to a weekly meeting of the long-term recovery agencies that are gonna be here in town. Um, and then it's, 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 it's basically many of the agencies that are United Way agencies already. So those monies are gonna be, be here. There's gonna be, I believe, there's gonna be enough money in terms of what they're gonna have to cover many, if not all, of the needs that our people have. Short of they're not gonna be able to buy a new house, but any kind of needs that they can demonstrate that they're gonna have, I think there's gonna be funds out there for it or an avenue at least to try to get those funds. So we didn't have this, that I can recall after ninety-nine or after two thousand and three. Their, their donations from all over the world to all of the agencies have been tremendous. But those two very out-front, uh, agencies are the ones that are gonna lead the long-term recovery and the funding of the long-term recovery.
So it's United Way and Red Cross, right?
United Way and Red Cross.
Okay. Um, for people that need, you know, I ran across a couple this last weekend that they desperately need help and they had no clue even where to go and I wasn't sure what to tell them. Where, where do they need to go?
Well, first they need to go to the Mark, the multi-agency.
Okay, and when, is that, is that Westmore? That's a Westmore High School, okay.
That's still open. Uh, they'll keep it open as long as there's a need. And that is still open. So that's the first place to go. You have to register for FEMA and then you go there. And also FEMA's Disaster Recovery Center is there at Westmore High School. And also SBA is there at Westmore High School. So it's really a one-stop shop. For anybody who had any kind of, um, issues or, or, or damage problems, at least first stop for them to make. And then all of the social service agencies that provide assistance to people will be a part of this umbrella of the long-term recovery under Red Cross and United Way.
And what kind of things will they pay for, for this long-term recovery?
I, I, I don't even know that I can say necessarily. I think they're, they're talking about some things like they've never done before as far as, and, and I'm gonna be pushing them to provide, uh, shelters for the people to build back in our neighborhoods that were destroyed. I mean, things like that. Some people may not see that as a need per se, but I, I think it is. But other things, I'm sure they'll be able to help with rental assistance and some of those normal things, counseling, lots of things that they're gonna be able to provide. If there's a need, we're, we're gonna have an avenue to present it, either the individual and/or I, me. If I need to present it on behalf of a group of citizens or a single citizen in our community, I will.
That's good. And I appreciate that because it's, that, that has been expressed as a concern by some people that all this money was raised and they were afraid that, you know, it wouldn't, wasn't helping the people that needed help. You know, and I didn't have an answer.
I think Red Cross and United Way are gonna be very, um, cognizant of the fact that those monies are there and, and they are there and they, and they are acknowledging that. They are going to use those monies and I think we will hold them to it. The media will hold them to it. Everybody's gonna hold them to it.
Right. And that's, that's my concern. I just wanna make sure that it goes where they said it was gonna go.
Is it not true that, uh, money donated to the American Red Cross for this was channeled into an Oklahoma fund more or less?
Yes, absolutely.
And, and that, uh, contrary to things in the past where it went through the national and some overhead was skipped off and so forth, that's not happening?
It did not. The, the ten dollars that everybody did with Texas nine nine nine, Red Cross and all that from May twentieth or May nineteenth forward, all that money is in the local Red Cross. And then there were millions of dollars that were donated. You know, the basketball players and the country singers and, and all of that went to Red Cross.
Good. I appreciate it. That was, that, that has been a concern, so that helps. Thank you.
And I would just add that, um, faith-based groups out there, and I speak for First Baptist Church and Surmaeus is the same way. That if people give and they designate that giving is for tornado relief, whether it be for food, for clothes or whatever, then a hundred percent of that, at least for First Baptist Church more, none of that goes for salaries or any of that. It goes, all of that, if you give ten dollars, every bit of that ten dollars will go to helping people.
Our Methodist Church did the same thing too, so. Now, the, the Serve More organization, are they still in town using volunteer? How long will they be here? Because I'm, I'm working with the school district on our volunteer program, but we're pretty well getting things cleaned up. So I need a place to direct them, so I, but I didn't know if Serve More is gonna be around for a while.
For a while, it's gonna be open until there's no need, I guess, right?
So at least a couple of months, maybe?
They raise salaries for more people to be here for at least six months. So they have, they have that, and they actually are community members that live here. So they're here even after they're done.
So if I have people that want to volunteer, how, where do I exactly send them?
ServeMore.com.
Okay, and it has information on there, like, okay. Okay, they're still gonna be there, okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Just have one thing. Do you have any, uh, feedback or any information on the hospital? I've heard that they are, wanna rebuild, but not what was there. That there may be an emergency room or it may be more like a twenty-four-hour emergency care. Do we know anything about that?
I don't. They haven't, I don't think their, their board, if they have voted, I don't think they've made that public. But Integris has expressed an interest here. And I said this yesterday on KTOK because the, um, the market in, in Norman is about twelve percent of households have household insurance. Oklahoma City's around eighteen percent. We know this from the study that was done when the hospital was built. Citizens in Moore, uh, it's a strong union city. There are federal and state employees. Uh, and there's about eighty-two percent households that are insured. So I'm sure that the two of those, Integris or, um, Norman Regional Health Center, will, one of them will step up. Because it's a, it's, it's the money market.
Well, and just the comments that I've gotten is that we need a hospital, a full-service hospital, an emergency room here.
Deidre, Deidre and I did meet with some of the executives of the hospital when, last week or week before us.
Last week, right.
Whenever that was. And, and, and I don't think they have all of their plans in place. I got the strong impression that they fully intend to come back and build something. The first thing they do intend to build that they did tell us was it'd be in a portable or temporary type facility would be an emergency facility. They have a strong, um, use of emergency, um, emergency room here. They are having, on the twenty-fifth, which is a week from tomorrow at eight o'clock in the morning, they're having a kind of a ceremony to, I guess, to say goodbye to the old building and the old memories or whatever. And they're gonna start the demolition that day. But they've invited us, uh, and they also intend to, I think, announce at least some of their plans at that thing on Tuesday morning, Tuesday, a week from tomorrow.
Can you just kinda relay some of that to us? I would appreciate it.
Sure, sure.
As far as what, what their plans are, 'cause I haven't heard anything.
Well, we'll, we'll relay what we know as, as fact.
Important and sense of urgency and they need to.
We have indicated that to them, that it's, that it's our desire, that we strongly wanna have a hospital presence here. I doubt if it'll be a hospital with fifty beds inpatient. I think it's gonna be probably something different than that, what they indicated. But, uh, I, I believe it's their desire to be back here.
One hundred percent. And they're, uh, they, we have their press release on our website that they announced their plans, which are again, not yet finalized, but their plans are absolutely to rebuild on that same site. And so there should be no question as to if it will be them and as of now and who, you know, who it will be in the fact that they are coming back. So that press release is on our website and we can email it out to you all. And as far as the date for the demolition, I literally got confirmation of that. Like, it absolutely is happening in, for today. So, not today, I got confirmation today that it is gonna be on the twenty-fifth. So I will send you all an agenda for what that's gonna look like. It's just an hour in the morning and they've asked for a proclamation from the mayor, um, to be read at that. So, um, again, that's on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Just a quick comment. Deidre and I are both on the advisory board for Salvation Army, talking about money and that type of thing. There's gonna be a huge announcement also coming from them over the next few weeks, um, that money will be spent here. I, I learned that yesterday.
I have a couple of things. Um, I got to, I had a privilege the other day. I got to go to, to David Roberts Church over there. And all the churches have stepped up and they've been so generous. David's Church over there, they serve thirty thousand meals over there at that. And I'm, I'm sure that the First Baptist and Mayus, everybody, the Methodist Church, they've all stepped up. I mean, they've collected enough water to fill up Draper Lake. So you see them on every corner. It really is, but it's just been an outpouring. And, and it, you know, I don't think it was, it was quite like that the last time we had a major disaster. But, I mean, it just seems like this time it's just been extra special and everybody's pitched in. And it's really been nice. And I just wanna say thank you to all the church groups out there who, who did this, all the faith-based organizations. And, uh, we do have a, a group of, uh, AmeriCorps, uh, I wanna say students or not really students. Most of them have been students. And there's about two hundred of them along with FEMA Corps, young people who are here in our, in our, uh, city, helping different people, moving slabs to the curb even. So they've, they've helped out a lot and I do appreciate their work. And, uh, last time I was saying thank yous to everybody and I forgot to mention Stephen Stan. And I just wanna say thanks, guys, for, for heading up the organization and all the work you do. So, uh, I do appreciate you. And one of the other things I would like to put on for the next agenda, and this is gonna get a little dicey probably, I wanna do for all new developments, I wanna make it mandatory for safe rooms in all the school systems. Uh, any new school system or school that's built, any daycares, duplexes, apartment complexes, any multifamily and any assisted living and nursing homes that are built in the future, I want us to require a safe room. It may not be the political thing to do, but it's the right thing to do. I don't know. We'll put it on there and discuss it and see how it works. And I may even put on there for individual houses that, in new developments. I won't do it in the old developments because most of those people can't afford to build back now. But in the new, uh, in the new stuff, I think we should consider it. So if we're gonna be a storm-ready community, by God, we oughta be storm-ready. So that's all I gotta say about that. Any items from the city or trust manager?
Just a couple of things, Mayor. One is, uh, there's a copy of the financial statement there for the month of May. As you can see, our general fund looks very good and our MPWA fund is beginning to squeak back towards, uh, looking a little bit better. Uh, it's better to see black than red there. So if you have any questions about that, see Jim. But, but the financials.
Jim, that's called rolling over the bus.
But, uh, but we're, but we're in good shape there. And also there's the year-end, uh, sales tax report here that, that, uh, you may have gotten or, or you may have seen. But we wound up at five point seven-three percent increase, which is very good. Um, I think we had, uh, projected right around five percentage-ish. So we're pretty well right on projections. You've probably seen quite a few stories around in the news of late with Oklahoma City and Norman particularly, um, struggling fairly mightily with their sales tax. So we're happy and delighted, uh, to continue to see strong increases in our sales tax and our retail community out there. We're extremely thankful for our retailers, um, and what they do for our community. Deidre didn't mention it and I'm only going to mention it in generalities, but we still continue to visit with, um, retailers who are interested, um, and, uh, big retailers, uh, that are interested in coming. And we believe that, uh, we have a pretty firm commitment from a big retailer that we'll be able to, uh, talk about at some point in the future. But if, if that happens, it'll be another very good, um, signal for our community as far as, um, as far as the community's concerned. There's one other thing of this, we got this flag. Some folks came in to see us and we've gotten a lot of wonderful things from folks bringing, just bringing stuff in to us. Then the mayor's gotten boku's, things written from the little kids. And we've gotten a lot of that.
And make you cry.
That, and those things will make you cry. We've gotten some, some of our folks that used to live in Moore, they work up at the Pentagon now. And, uh, this flag was flown over the Pentagon on Memorial Day, this past Memorial Day. And they brought it in just for us to have to, uh, show their kind of support for our community. So I thought that was, um, pretty cool.
That's cool.
And we did get a resolution, uh, of support from the Canadian government of Quebec and it was unanimous. I was gonna bring that, I'm having a frame, so I have that for you guys to see. It's in French. I couldn't read it anyway. They didn't give me a copy in English, so they sent me another one. It's like, okay, cool.
Okay. Item fifteen is executive session. Section three oh seven, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes permits the pelvic body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item eight, discuss considering it deemed appropriate to take possible action regarding pending litigation styled Vonda Spain versus CP Integrated Services Incorporated in the city of Moore, case number CJ two zero one two dash six seven dash W. And authorize legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by Oklahoma twenty, or excuse me, twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, three oh seven B dash four.
I commissioned a convened executive session.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Rob Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, Mary.
This, this would be very quick, so come on back. This, this should be very quick, so come on back. Robertson, hurry.
Would you call the rollback, please?
Robert, Robert Kraus.
President.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Cavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. We have a, uh, a motion, do we have a motion on the, uh?
I will make a motion for staff to proceed as directed.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item sixteen is adjourned.
So moved.
Alright, thank you. Thank you all three of you. Yeah, thanks to everybody. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.